So Jake Peart is going to lead the pledge. And then Susan Lewis is going to lead the prayer unless Uriah is here. I think we're about ready to start. Oh, very good. We'd like to welcome everybody to the Washington County Board of Commissioners, and we appreciate your attendance here today. This is a little bit a good demonstration of why we're building a new building next door, because it does get a little crowded here on any sort of presentations that we're doing. But we very much appreciate you all being here and your attendance. I'm looking for our prayer. Uriah Halstein, if he is here, I didn't see him. And so we're going to go ahead and start our meeting with an invocation by our clerk auditor, Susan Lewis, after which our pledge of allegiance will be led by Jake Peart.
My dear King, Father in heaven, we are so grateful to thee for the many blessings that thou hast given us and the many things that thou hast done for us. We're thankful for this wonderful land that we have to live in and the freedoms that thou hast blessed us with. We're thankful for the beauties in Washington County and the scenery and the wonderful things that we have here. Father, we are thankful that we have the opportunity to participate in this meeting. We're thankful for the commissioners. We ask that thou would please bless them with the health and the strength, the wisdom and the knowledge that they need to accomplish the work that we have to do. Father, we love thee and we appreciate all that thou gives to us and that thou does for us, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Thank you both very much. As we begin our meeting, our first item on our agenda is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting the consideration of routine matters. If a commissioner requests that items be removed from the consent agenda, those items are placed at the beginning of the regular agenda. Other than request to remove items, a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda is non-debatable.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as listed here. Item A, consideration of auditor-approved claims for payment from March 16th, 2022 through April 5th, 2022. B, consideration of regular commission meeting minutes of March 15th, 2022. C, consideration of administrative adjustments, real property. D, consideration of administrative adjustments, personal property. E, consideration of applications for property tax abatement, of which there are nine. F, consideration of payment plan for settlement of property taxes. G, consideration of final condensed Utah retirement systems contribution rate guide for fiscal year July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. H, consideration of disposal of surplus property from the sheriff's office. I, consideration of agreement between Washington County Sheriff's Office and Dixie Convention Center. J, consideration of agreement between Washington County Sheriff's Office and Utah Department of Transportation. And finally, K, acknowledgement of publication of ordinance number 2022-1205 on Sunday, March 12th, March 20th, 2022.
I recommend no division and second that motion.
We have a motion in the second on our consent agenda, and I'm glad we finished at K. We were halfway through the alphabet there. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
At this moment, I would like to make a motion to adjust our regular agenda items for consideration, leaving item number one in place in the order, item number two in place in the order, and then moving item number five, a presentation of Utah election law, to item number three for consideration of the group that's gathered.
Very good. We have a motion to amend our regular agenda and move item five up to number three.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second on that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is now amended. We're now on to our first five items, our presentations. And our first one is an introduction to our Washington County and Miss Greater Zion. And I have, Allison, are you presenting?
I am going to present just for a minute. Just happy to be here and thank you for your support. If you would pass them each, we have a program for each of you, so you can just look over our program that we had. We had 13 candidates, so we are, we're excited to have these girls represent our county. So we will start out with Miss Washington County.
Hi, everyone. My name is Elise Johnston. I'm your new Miss Washington County 2022. I'm currently attending Dixie State University with a major in psychology and minor in biomedical sciences. So happy to be here. My goal this year is to incorporate the Switchpoint Home and Shelter more in our community. Thank you, guys, for letting me serve our community this year.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name is Brooklyn Pace, and I'm so excited to serve as your Miss Greater Zion this year. And I am attending Dixie State in a business administration major, and my goal this year is to help everyone gain their patch of confidence.
Very good. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Zoe Sewell, and I am a student at Dixie State University studying criminal justice with a minor in computer science. I am Miss Washington County's and Miss Greater Zion's first attendant, and I just want to thank you, guys, so much for giving us the opportunity to serve this year.
Hello, my name is Shay Johnson. I am the second runner-up to Miss Washington County and Miss Greater Zion. I am a student at Dixie State University studying nursing, and I'm very excited to serve the community this year.
Hi, I'm Riley M. Lay. I am Miss Greater Zion and Miss Washington County's Miss Spirit, and I'm just really excited to serve Washington County this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we please get a picture with the commissioners, with the royalty?
Absolutely.
I'm just going to state the obvious, Mr. Chair, that we've taken worse pictures.
Yeah. And Susie Laffeielli, I noticed you're in the back. If you wouldn't mind coming up and reminding everybody about the county fair. And actually, the royalty, they work hard, and we now have a few seats up here as well. So.
I was hoping you didn't see me hiding in the back. We are 10 days away from our rodeo happening on April 15th and 16th, and the county fair in 15 days happening April 20th through the 23rd, with our parade and kickoff party on the 19th. So things are going well.
And the royalty works awful hard during the county fair.
They do.
They really do.
And they begin their year of service by coming out to the fair. They're there for all four days, five days with the parade, the rodeo. They help extensively, as well as all of our city princesses. They come and help with intake and entries and tickets to the Derby and all sorts of stuff.
Fantastic.
But yeah, we're gearing up. We're moving things out and getting the arenas ready, and we've been working all day pulling things out of storage, so.
Super. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And everybody, come to the county fair. Okay, we're now on to item two, a presentation by the Southern Utah Bicycle Alliance. Mark Mortensen. And then Councilwoman Danielle Larkin, nice to have you, and Brett Burgess, it's good to see you.
Hey, commissioners, thank you for your time. I'm Brett Burgess, along with Danielle Larkin, like you said, past president of the Southern Utah Bike Alliance, and my co-chair, Mark Mortensen. We'd like to thank you for all that you do for the cycling community. We know that without public help, we couldn't accomplish any of our goals. Our passion is cycling. It's getting people out. It's active, trying to promote healthy and active ways for people to commute and to get around, to, you know, get healthy. I myself started cycling pretty consistently about 10 years ago. I've lost 80 pounds doing it. I mean, I got, I got pretty big when things got tough in the recession, and so cycling was my stress relief and way for me to get healthy again. I'd like to read this, so you know what Southern Utah Bike Alliance is all about and what our goals are. Southern Utah Bike Alliance is dedicated to improving biking in Southern Utah. We advocate for safe infrastructure for child, for children to bike to school, for road cyclists, biking to work as a commuter, older bikes, and everything in between. We invite you and everyone to follow us on Facebook to know what we're trying to do to accomplish our cycling goals in Southern Utah. On behalf of the Southern Utah Bike Alliance, we're pleased to present this, an excellent in transportation, excellent in active transportation leadership award for the Washington County Commissioners. This award goes to leaders who have shown a significant commitment to promoting bicycling and walking in our community. Some examples of this leadership include the commissioners' work on the following projects: SR-18 shoulder expansion, funding multi-use trails, the one from Veo to Central is fresh in our mind, funding and supporting the bike trails to Zion National Park, supporting important bike events such as the Ironman, which is, you know, huge for our community, and the spring and fall tours, providing funding for the Pine Valley Mountain Trail Network System. And I know there's, there's many others. Those are just a few to be named. Commissioner's support on projects like these provides significant economic impact to our community, promotes freedom in transportation choices, and improves the overall quality of life and health of Washington County residents. We have worked with the commission over the years on a variety of projects and found them responsive and helpful for the needs of cyclists. The Southern Utah Bike Alliance would like to thank the commissioners, thank commissioners Omquist, Iverson, and Snow for their dedicated effort to making our community more bikable, and present this plaque to show our appreciation. Thank you for your time and dedication to serve the community.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to add that a lot of these projects began with Commissioner Dean Cox as well.
Yeah. So. And I was, I was thinking, we are getting very close to that trail that will connect all the way to Springdale. Where everybody, those e-bikes are coming in. They say that's the next big thing, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, we are now on to item three, which is our presentation on election law and Washington County Clerk's Auditor, Auditor's Office. Thank you so much for being here. We figured we'd start this conversation off, for all of you, by explaining how the elections have been working and, so that we can go from there, so.
So, yeah, I'm excited that we have a lot of people interested in elections. It's important to us. It's what we do. But it's sometimes very frustrating to see on social media or to get websites and things that, that talk about what happens in other places. And I, I'm not saying that they're good. I need to get closer, sorry. I don't want to lean over. In other places, but we need to really, today, put our focus on what happens in Utah, not in other states and other places. In the state of Utah, we've had a very Republican and conservative legislature for many, many years, and they've taken all of the things that can happen in elections and brought them the wide range really small, sorry, as I hit you with my head, huh, into a small pathway of things that we do and help us understand what we can do, the laws associated with what we can do and what we cannot do. So I'm going to talk a little bit first about what we cannot do. I get to be bad cop and say, no, 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 no. And then we'll have Melanie, we'll talk to you about the things that we can do or that we are doing. The first thing that you need to know, a lot of questions that we've had, is about Dominion election machines. So first you need to know, in Washington County, we do not have Dominion. The next thing that you need to know is that in Washington County, in fact, we don't have any electronic voting machines at all. It is a paper ballot solution. Whether you are mailed a paper ballot, or whether you go to the Dixie Center or to the Hurcan, you know, Recreation Center to vote in person, it's still going to be a piece of paper that you vote on. If you are somebody with disabled and you use the ADA accessible solution, it's still a piece of paper that goes into that machine. You are still voting on a paper ballot, no matter how you decide to vote. The biggest reason that we like paper ballots is it's very auditable. We have an audit trail. We can go back and look at this piece of paper, and we can verify what the vote was passed and actually do that on a regular basis. Something that I thought, we thought you might be interested in is this last legislative session. You told me to slow down. I like to talk fast, sorry about that. We did have 15 election-related laws that passed in 2022. Now, all of those had to do with security, had to do with increased election. You want to turn it? Thank you. Sorry. I should stop and say, hey, turn the page. Election security, some of it had to do with funding things like video surveillance on drop boxes. There was some that addressed confidentiality, and the one that we were less excited about had to do with ranked choice voting. Now, you need to be aware that the Clerk Association was approached back in, I think it was 2017, we were trying to remember, 2017 or 18, by some lobbyists thinking that ranked choice voting would be a great solution in Utah. The Clerk's Association opposed it then, and we still oppose it, but anyway, we opposed it then, and so they kind of went around us, and the lobbyists went straight to the legislature and made their presentations, and really, it's called in the law, it stated that it's a pilot program. So it's really kind of supposed to just be something to try. In 2019, two cities did do their municipal elections by ranked choice. Nothing happened in 2020, but in 2021, there was 20, I think, three, 23 cities that did run ranked choice votes. Again, we don't really love it. We've opposed it all along. We appreciate those others that join in with us in opposition, because it's not a good way to audit. There's not really good way for me to certify that the election happened as it's supposed to have happened. We give our information to a third party to come up with those different rankings, and so we're very uncomfortable about that. So now, I'm going to turn some time over to Melanie. She's going to tell you how it really works here.
Okay, and if you haven't figured out how this goes yet, she's the bad cop, I'm the good cop. I get to say what we do. So this is, this is kind of interesting.
Melanie, just as loud as you can.
I can.
Perfect.
I'm going to try, I'm going to try to sneak up a little closer. All right, so what you're going to get from me is the highest level type of how elections work here in Utah, and I'm going to talk really fast, okay? So I'm super sorry, I'm trying to give you an overview of the things that we actually do. Okay, so voter registration, of course, is one of the most crucial parts of elections, period, okay? Something that we do. Okay, so what we do, so when a person comes to register to vote, whether we, they come in person, whether we get something by the mail or through the DMV, the first thing we do is check the information. Is it correct? Do we have all of the information that we need? If all of those checkboxes are met, then we literally verify a person's identity. We, we collaborate, I guess, or at the state voter database, we are integrated, that was the word I was looking for, with the driver's license division and the federal social security office. So we verify that this person is who they are. Then another crucial step is we verify that it's actually a legitimate address. Is it an address here in Washington County? Is it a residential address here in Washington County? Because, of course, you can't register at a commercial address or at a P.O. box or a mailing address, right? So the state's voter database is very great, and it helps us to do that, along with, of course, the personal knowledge we have in our office. We know really well where these commercial addresses are, anyway. So we've, you know, so we checked the information, we verified identity, we've checked for a residential address, then we actually verify somebody's address again, and that's with the postal service software. And then we actually have to send out an official voter information card. If that happens to come back to our office, then, of course, we verify that information again. Well, maybe it was a clerical error on our part. We fix it, send it out, or if it's not, that person becomes inactive, and we'll go through that here in a second. Okay, another question that people have is, we have to have clean voter rolls. Well, we absolutely agree, and that's one of the things we do here in Washington County very well, and we're very proactive. All right, so every day, there's a staff member in our office, and they go through the local obituaries every single day. They remove deceased voters. We get regular reports from the vital statistics and also out-of-state reports, so those people are removed from the voter rolls. We actually process return mail, so we talked about a voter information card that's sent out. So if it's returned as undeliverable from the post office, we make those people inactive. The Washington County Clerk's Office pays every two to three months. We pay for a national change of address report, and those reports, we will go through and investigate every single person that's on that roll, and we will either make them inactive if they've moved out of the county and contact them, of course, that's part of the requirements where we have to contact them, but we've made them inactive so that they won't receive ballots. And then we will also, you know, just kind of make a plea for you guys that as you're registering to vote and you're moving, please remember, if you move, you do need to update your address. That's a requirement, but yes, we will chase you down sometimes if we have to. Okay? All right, now, we've talked a little bit about active or inactive status, like when I get a confirmation card back. So let's go through and let's talk about what the registration statuses are in the state of Utah. We have active registered voters, and they are people who we've verified who they are. We've verified that their address is worth it there. We've sent them a mailing, hasn't come back, is undeliverable, so they're good, right? Now, the inactive status is people who we have received unofficial mailing back, something that says, hey, they're no longer at this address. They have a new address out of, out of the county. People like that, we place them into that inactive status until they officially respond and say, hey, I've either moved out of the county, or, you know, maybe we find something else, maybe they, the deceased role comes in and we find out that they're deceased. Inactive voters in Utah do not receive ballots in the mail. It's just not possible. We just don't do it. Another we have is we have the suspense status, and these are for, usually for voters who are currently incarcerated on a conviction of a crime. So this is something that's done through the state of Utah. They go ahead and do that. People in suspense do not receive ballots in the mail. We have another status called removable, and this is where we will, we can, we're authorized to put somebody in a removable. That's if somebody is deceased, they go from being active to being removable. Of course, they don't receive ballots in the mail. Then there's the last status is called holding, and this is the state holding area. This is basically somebody who hasn't voted in a really long time, has moved out of the state, and then are moving back. These people have to re-register, and they will not get a ballot in the mail.
And Melanie, I think the, the one point that was telling for me, or something that I needed to realize, is that it is only the active voters that receive a ballot.
Yes, that's correct. And so this next slide literally says that. So the question is, do we mass mail ballots? Well, no. We're a by-mail county, so yes, we mail out ballots, but we only mail out ballots to active registered voters. Okay, the other question we have is about ballot harvesting. So it is against the law already for ballot harvesting. Of course, we don't like it, and we're proactive all the time in trying to make sure that that does not occur. And of course, the designation is no one is allowed to gather and submit a group of ballots. Okay, go ahead. All right, so the other, next piece, we really do test. We really do audit before, during, and after every election. Okay, before every election, the first thing we do is we run through what we have is a predetermined set of test deck, a test deck. And this test deck runs through every single piece of equipment that runs ballots. Every single machine, every single test deck, we compare apples to apples, not a part of the test deck here and a part of the test deck there. We want to make sure that everything is tabulating properly before the election, and of course, we do that. Then we have a public logic and accuracy test before every election. It's publicized, and we want people to come. It's been that way forever. This is where we will go through and we'll test ballots, we'll add in the variables from the people who come in, and we'll actually go through that process. It's really cool. And then through the election, we have the ability for poll watchers to come in and actually watch and, and, and what they need to do. We encourage poll watchers. We've never once said, hey, no, you can't come. So we have an open-door policy here in Washington County. We want people to participate. However, we are in an itty-bitty living space, so we may have to kind of curtail that a little bit, but we expect and we encourage participation from the public while we're processing ballots. Then we have a post-election audit. This is also a public meeting. This is published. This is out there for the public. This audit is to basically, it takes our batches of envelopes and ballots in the lieutenant governor's office, randomizes those little things, and then we get to relook at them again. It's really an awesome process. We would love people to attend. It's a great thing to have. Then the last thing that we do is we literally verify the correct results. So the question we have is, is, you know, we just want to make sure that everything is secure, so we take, of course, every step possible to verify that everything is correct. And then this is another misconception. People believe that the election is over on election night. It's never been that way, not since I've been here, and that's been 20 years. Okay, the election is final on the canvas day. Okay, on the canvas day, that is, that is when everything is final. Election night is just when the unofficial election night results are, are out. Okay, the canvass is held seven to 14 days after the election, and this is in code. Can't have it sooner than seven, no more than 14, and we tend to have it on the 14th day. We have a lot of military and overseas voters, and we want to make sure that those ballots come back, and if they're eligible, we want to make sure we count them. The commissioners are the board of canvassers, and as a part of this canvas, we have the responsibility to make sure that every eligible ballot is counted and accounted for. Okay, so that is something we do. And then, once that is done, we present that information to the board of canvassers, and then they certify the election results. All right, so this is another question that we have, is what do we do with our election when it's done? When do we actually put that election to bed? And yes, it, it does go to bed. It'll be after the canvas date. Okay, so, so after the election is over, we seal everything. We do, we drop it in boxes, we seal them as we go along, and we make sure that they're kept unopened for 22 months. This is actually part of the Utah code. This can only be opened by the legislature or by court order. So we can't get in there, or you can't get in there and just go, oh, I want to take a look at this. I want to take a look at this. Can't do it, okay? Everything is sealed. We do that to protect your privacy, and we want to make sure that all the ballots are secured, just in case there is a recount, or in case the legislature gives us an order to do that. We want to make sure everything is in order and accessible for them to get to, and nothing's been messed with.
Pristine. Yeah, we would like that information to be pristine. We actually have a series of slides, a presentation that we gave at a lunch and learn last month to our employees and staff here at the county. We want to take that out on the road and make that available to other people. We want to take that out on the road and make that available to other people to come. Unfortunately, it's about an hour to an hour and a half presentation. Not really appropriate for this venue. We will be publishing, and we are going to, I guess, take names and let people sign up for them because we feel like there's that kind of interest in these presentations. We want them to be here at the county building so that you can then walk through and tour and see what equipment we have, how it works, and exactly what we do. So I hope that that helps you guys in, in your information, I mean, to know what it is that you have responsibility for, and really what the state law allows us to do with elections.
And Susan, you know, there was an, an audit done in, in Arizona, and it brought up a variety of suggestions. And when Utah looked at those suggestions, we were basically doing all of them. I think as, as, as this country is, is having this debate about elections, maybe you could speak a little bit to the, the fact that not all states are operating the same. So when you hear about something that happened in Clark County, the, we wouldn't be under those same practices here.
Absolutely, that's kind of where I started, with things that people see on social media, or they read on the web. I, I, I'm sorry that they have some bad things going on in Wisconsin. Our Utah laws are, again, much more secure, much more of a guideline. We have a very direct path of what we can and what we cannot do. So when we talked about mass mailing, somebody I said that to, and they said, well, what does that even mean? And like you're, to your point, in Clark County, they sent ballots out to every address. Every household got a ballot. That's not what we do here. So I, I hope people understand, what we do here is a lot more secure. It's a lot better. We have rules, we have laws, and we've had them for years to protect and keep our elections secure.
And talk a little bit about, the equipment is not hooked up to any sort of.
No, that's what we were trying to explain in the beginning. There's no electronic voting in here. There's none, it's all paper ballots. So there's none of this kind of equipment that, that, I, I realize, this video's gone around, this presentation's gone around for years, actually, we saw a few years ago, and then was brought again last year by Representative Stevenson, but it was the same information we'd already seen, giving vulnerabilities to equipment that's connected to the internet. Utah state law says we can't connect it to the internet, and, and we're, we don't. We don't even have that kind of equipment, so if that helps people to feel a little more secure.
Melanie made a good point, that our equipment is like a very sensitive upgraded Scantron that we used to do our tests on almost. And I think a lot of people might be surprised to realize that we do catch fraud.
Attempted fraud.
Yes, we kept, yes. And maybe describe the, the biggest culprits there, because I think somebody identified the three of them, you know?
So, so do you want to have the, the naughty list, you mean?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, so, so unfortunately, we do catch people attempting voter fraud. Number one, of course, and I, I, I will say it lovingly, but it's the, it's the missionary moms and dads. Who their missionaries are away, and they get their ballots, and they go, oh yeah, I, I, I can go ahead and sign for them. So that's kind of the number one group. The other is the parents of college students. That happens quite frequently. And then, I think my favorite is, is, it's actually happened, but we had a spouse actually vote for a deceased spouse because they knew exactly how that they should vote. So.
And she just passed her last wish.
She just passed, that was her dying wish. But, but there are some really good safeguards that are already legislated. I mean, our by-mail laws here in Utah have been crafted by our majority Republican legislature for decades. Not six months, like 2020, or, you know, before the COVID hit. We've had decades of crafting these, these election laws from being very broad to being literally a very narrow pathway, that we know exactly what we need to do. I think they've taken some really great steps towards, of course, security measures. Our, our equipment is secure, the things that we need to do are secure, our testing is awesome. The post-election audits are fantastic. I mean, we, we test it, we, we test it, and we test it, and when we audit it, it just all comes into play.
And I want to say one more thing about that, to that point, is we, every election, take time to look and see, is there any gaps? Is there any vulnerabilities that we can now do something different? Additional security, additional steps to make it more secure? And we do that after every election, because as we go through the process, we go like, ooh, it'd be really good if we had a form that we signed on that, and everybody knew. So anyway, it's that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just want to say, for everybody, if, if this is your first commission meeting, they're not all quite this packed, although we wish they would be, right? But, but I applaud everybody, everybody for being here and for, for taking interest in something that is the most fundamental aspect of our republic. If, if we don't have faith in, in the integrity of our elections, I mentioned last night to somebody who I see still sitting here, that in, in a meeting, if you don't have faith in our elections, then we should be buying ammunition and canned food, right? Because that's, it'll be the end of our republic as we know it. And, and, and some, some of us already are. If you can find ammo, let me know where it is, though. But, but because this really is the most fundamental part of, of our government and, and our system of governance, and so I applaud everybody for taking an interest, because for a long time, many people don't, right? And, and I wish this room was, was 10 times larger for many reasons, and that it was packed every single week like this. And then, secondly, I, I would encourage you, for the hour and a half meeting, the meetings, multiple, that you're going to be holding, please come in and participate. I've done this job for six months now. But the, one of the very first things I did was to come and volunteer and go through every single step of the, of the process and see how it all works, so that I knew that I could look you in the, in the eyes and say, yes, I have confidence in the system because I've gone through it, I know how it works. I've seen every step, and I know, I know what kind of redundancy, after redundancy, after redundancy, there is to make sure that we, we don't have, we're not susceptible to, to fraud that we see in other places. So come and watch, come and participate. They would love nothing more than to do this. It's kind of a nerdy endeavor. They would love to share their nerdiness on elections with you. And, and come and volunteer next time we have an election, which there will be multiple this year. So come and volunteer on those things. But realize that, that we, we share those same fears and, and the, the concerns that people have. I'm, I'm assigned to work with the clerk auditor, and so, while you're elected, and this is your, this is your baby to, to run under law, but, but we work closely together. And so many of the calls that come through with somebody that says, hey, I've got four ballots. I take every one of those calls seriously, and I say, you bring them in right now, and we're going to storm over to, to the clerk auditor's office, and we're going to talk about this. And so far, 100% of the time, it has been user error on something, right? And somebody said, I've got four ballots, look at them, and you look at it, you go, you did get four ballots. There's a, Melanie, you messed up.
What, you mean, two for the primary and two for the general?
Two for the primary that they never mailed back, and two for the general that they hadn't submitted yet. And, and they have a very clear explanation. So before we set the world on fire, please come and, and, and talk to them and go through the process. It will be an illuminating thing for you. And also, if you have good ideas, they do not claim to have every good idea. They will take everything from you and try and see if we can make this even stronger, even more secure, and even better. But, but you'll have an opportunity to answer, ask lots of questions and bring these forward in a, in a lot longer timeframe, so it's not an overview. You can get as in-depth as you possibly want.
Commissioner Oram, question?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Adam. You know, it's interesting, it is the hallmark of our nation. They came from a situation where they couldn't vote, really, right? It was a mock vote, you know, England will let you decide on if cotton is white enough, or whatever, you know? It's, it wasn't really our leadership, and House of Burgess and Williamsburg tells the story. I loved hearing it, how it came to be that we had free elections. But I want to tell a personal story, because the beginning of COVID, my son and daughter-in-law, they could live anywhere. They were in New York, they were wrapping things up there, so why not come home to St. George and live with mom and dad for free? That, that's not the point of the story, although it kind of has a rub here. Anyway, but they were here, changed their address, and of course, in the process of that, wanting to, to vote, they got ballots. But they came right as they then moved to Chicago. I thought it was ironic that they would get a ballot in moving to the kingdom of ballots that are mysterious. Anyway, but if you'll remember, I brought them both in.
I do, I remember.
And I said, they're no longer living here.
Yep.
And that was the right thing to do. And that's what we'd hope everyone would do, right? It's the, the fair principle.
Yeah, and, and just so everybody knows, or it's going to be a new added wording on your envelope that says, you know, hey, if this ballot does not belong to you, then go ahead and return it to our office. So just to make sure, we don't have some people, so we can, of course, clean our voter rolls even more, because there is kind of a, a lag in between as people move and things like that, and we have to do things. But if you could help us keep those voter rolls clean, that would be phenomenal.
You know, and I think for, my wife will admit to you that election night is like Super Bowl for me, you know? I want to know if I have two or four years of disaster that I have to plan for, or two or four years of some normalcy, right? And so I get it all set up. I don't care if it's sunrise, but I, I like every race, every state, et cetera. But she knows that as a, I want things to turn out a certain way, right? So I'm, I'm very happy. But the last go-around, I was not happy. I'm not saying that, I'm not accusing anyone of anything, anywhere, but nationally, I wasn't happy. But if you recall, I came in and I said, will you walk me through one ballot? If I was the only person on earth, would you walk me through? And, and you explained the same things you did here. What I've learned recently, though, is that there's, there's two things. Our hands are, are tied a bit by the lieutenant governor and the legislature to say, hey, let's reopen these as we want, or we'll hand them over to a third party to do that. I don't know of anybody else, but I used to be very fearful of where my signature went. And I have, I'll, I'll give them a shout-out here, it's probably illegal, but I have a Capital One card. And I like the fact that at 4:05, I was over at the Maverick by Hilton and bought some gas. At 4:08, I got a text, and it said, somebody used your card in Mexico to buy a belt. What do you want me to do with that? I said, well, I'm not in Mexico. In fact, they said, and it's kind of scary that they knew right where I was, you were at a Maverick gas station, and you bought $80 worth of gas at 4:05? Just three minutes ago, I said, yes. And I loved that because I felt that they were trying to protect my, my signature as, as well. So I'm hoping that everyone knows that I don't want somebody else to see my signature, and when the time period is over, that there's no contested court requirement to open that, that they're destroyed. And we start the whole process over again. So I'm not opposed to people suggesting that we do things. We can't initiate it or do it. We could say, hey, we, we think you're nutso up north, but that's for up north to decide.
I think there's a, an important part here. This has been a, a good discussion as we've met with delegates through this, this campaign process. But the question sometimes arises, how did Washington County or the state of Utah end up with vote-by-mail opposed to the, the old system? And I think the answer, I like to say, is there was two things happening at the same time. First of all, our old equipment was becoming obsolete. And second of all, our good poll workers were all becoming obsolete as well. And the age of our poll workers, if you remember now, some people have talked about, talked to me and said, you know, I really appreciate and, and enjoyed the in-person voting. And I absolutely agree with you on that point. I mean, there was something, I, I describe it as a quasi-religious experience. On election day, going and standing in a line with your neighbors and, and friends and voting. But, you know, as we were looking at this equipment, and what we had going on in Washington County at the time was that at 40, about 40% of our county had already signed up for what is called permanent absentee ballot. In fact, you know, the, the Republican Party at the time was actually encouraging that, and I remember they gave me a packet to go door-to-door, and Lorraine Cox is here, she'll remember those good old days. And I flat refused. I was in party leadership, and I said, no, I'm not doing that. I can't stand the idea of vote-by-mail. They do it in Washington State, and look at the crooks they elect up there. And so, but what happened is, is I'm describing our equipment going out of date, is that our, our clerk auditor at the time, Kim Hafen, he said, look, 2020 is a presidential election. It's going to be huge, it's going to be big. We, whatever equipment, this is four years out, whatever equipment we decide to go with, we need to get it in place and run it through at least the election before. And so Washington County did. We had, we ran the, the vote-by-mail. At this time, we were already, vote-by-mail, like I said, 40% was on absentee ballots, and some of our outlying communities were being served by vote-by-mail. And so we had an entire election process prior to 2020 that really helped us get prepared. And that was a deliberate decision by Melanie and, and the clerk auditor's office to make that decision. And you just have to remember what happened in 2020 and so many other states, is they had no idea. They don't do anything compared to what we do in keeping the voter rolls safe. They were just mailing ballots out there. So when people say to me, look, I have concerns about the 2020 election, I say, I do too. I just don't have concerns with my, my state. And, and I would like all of you, what we're inviting you to do today is recognize that the door is open. Melanie mentioned several points of, of interaction that the public is invited to. Unfortunately, so we're going to, I was thinking we could do a great big meeting. But really, what we'd like you to do is, is sign up for these meetings where you can come in and, and sit down with, with Melanie and Susan, and walk through the process, go look at the equipment, and, and ask as many questions as you can, and, and just kind of, and you can give suggestions back on, on this. But understand a couple things. One is that we don't have the power to change state law. We wish we did. If, if you want to get the legislature to give us that power, I think Washington County will run just perfectly. But, but we do want you to become advocates for us. We're not dismissing your concern about election integrity at all. We, we do feel confident in, in our county, and we'd like to engage with you in that conversation. There has been some information out there where we've been listed on a map. And the challenge with what I understand in the underlying data there is they're taking population and census data, and they're saying, how can these precincts be overvoting by so far? Well, we've been growing so incredibly much, you know, it's, that's why. That's why account, in 10 years, you're going to see, you know, the number of precincts grow, you're going to see the number of voters in precincts expand. But please know that, that Washington County wants to engage with you, we, we appreciate you. And, and Melanie, I have so much respect for, I, I respected her so much before I came, became in this position. But, but I really do have confidence that if you'll engage with, with our clerk auditor's office, I would like to, to help, I would like you all to become advocates for, for what we're doing, but also recognize, we're not, I'm not advocating vote-by-mail because I love it, but I do believe it's a secure system.
Agreed.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Well. Thank you all so much. We don't have this down as a public hearing. We're hoping that the questions were mostly answered through the presentation as far as where state law's at and where the county's at. And we encourage you to continue to kind of engage with us and the clerk auditor's office, and just know that everything is, that our doors are open. So with that, we'll move on to our, our next item, which is the airport master plan.
Proposed land acquisition.
Oh, what is it? Item, whatever item, the next item is, come on. All right, that's good. How come I keep skipping things?
I'm, I'm just appalled, Mr. Chairman, not everybody wants to hear about the airport master plan right now.
There's, there's two more presentations here.
Yeah, we have lots more to go.
Amy Blair, how's it going?
Doing well, how are you guys?
Very good.
Can you guys hear me okay? I'm kind of soft-spoken, so I might have to shout.
We'll just wait a minute, they, they need a few minutes to. We'll just wait a minute. They need a few minutes to.
All right. Is that better?
Yeah.
I can hear myself now, so I think that's better. All right. My name is Haley Blair. I'm here today representing the Utah Division of Wildlife Resources to present to the commission a proposed land acquisition in the Red Cliffs Desert Reserve. And that's within the Washington County Habitat Management Plan, or HCP. The Red Cliffs Desert Reserve is approximately sixty-two thousand acres of preserved desert habitat, specifically focusing on the threatened Mojave Desert Tortoise. The primary goal of the reserve is to recover the threatened desert tortoise while carefully managing different public uses like recreation and utility projects. It's considered a very successful HCP and is administered by Washington County with coordination efforts between BLM, Fish and Wildlife Service, DNR, and State Trust Lands. So this map shows the location of our proposed acquisition relative to the reserve. So the red line outlines the Red Cliffs Desert Reserve. The yellow parcels in the middle are parcels that are already owned by the division, and then that blue star shows the location of this proposed acquisition. So the HCP, its main goal is to acquire privately owned in holdings within the Desert Reserve. This acquisition aligns with that goal by an initial twelve acre purchase of private property that's shown by that blue square on the map. This twelve acre purchase utilizes state funding as an initial purchase, which will then be used as state match for federal Section Six funds. That will be used to acquire significantly more private property in the reserve by the end of 2023. And the division will pay payment in lieu of tax on those twelve acres once the acquisition is finalized. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
No.
Answer them.
Thank you for us.
Helping us on those in holdings, yes. Those pasty in holdings.
I know, they're stickers, huh? I do have a letter to be signed by the commission chair that we came and presented to you guys.
Very good. Now we're on to that airport. Thank you, Haley.
Thank you so much.
Now we're on to our airport master plan.
That airport master plan, the room cleared out. I was a little offended by that. Usually it's the opposite when I present about an airport project.
Yeah.
All right. So today, we're going to talk about the airport master plan, which is, this is actually the first ever master plan done for the St. George Airport. So they did the initial plan when they developed the airport. This is the first ever twenty-year master plan, which is something that every airport does in order to secure federal funding. So the process that we have here is the master plan process, which we ask things like, what do we have? Where are we going? How do we get there? How do we implement it? That was the course of this eighteen-month process that we did. And we had a really, really cool public involvement process where we actually engaged thousands of people, which is really unheard of for a project, a non-controversial project. Usually we're engaging thousands because you're taking over a neighborhood or something like that. But we did the transportation expo. We had a steering committee. We had over two thousand responses to our internal survey. We got a lot of really, really good feedback. They're presenting to the city councils and this commission here today. So existing conditions, there's a lot of FAA technical stuff that goes into this, but generally speaking, you have a fully capable airport that can accommodate pretty much anything in the narrow-body fleet. I think we determined that the limiting factor is you can't get to Europe or Hawaii, which I think you're pretty good in terms of being able to accommodate whatever the future could throw at you for this airport. So in terms of the market and service area, we did a drive-time analysis. You can see Salt Lake City and Las Vegas and such, where those are the obvious big airports. But this airport has the real opportunity to become the airport of choice for all of southern Utah. That's really important to consider with a bright future ahead. We developed a forecast, and I will say, developing a forecast for aviation during COVID was a little interesting. And because it was, for this airport, it was really unique because the industry was in freefall, but everyone was coming to the national parks. So you were kind of the exception to the rule in terms of what was going on in aviation. We had a record-breaking year at a time when the industry was actually suffering so much. So in terms of what that does for the forecast, it kind of short-circuits the FAA mindset in terms of where we're actually going. So we actually created planning activity levels and a variety of planning thresholds that allowed us to be a little more flexible in how we looked at forecasting. So that was kind of a fun thing about this project, to really allow us to be more flexible, be more nimble, and responsive to what we feel is going to be a lot of continued growth for the airport. The critical aircraft, this is what you design to. They don't let you build to just anything. You actually have to identify the aircraft that you believe are going to use the airport on a regular basis, which is kind of a near-daily basis. You don't build it for the one time in five years that a 747 comes in. You don't build to that. So it's the larger regional jets right now, and in the future, it's going to be more of that mainline-sized aircraft. Some of you like Southwest, that kind of sized airplane is what we'd expect to see at the airport. Looked at the facility needs, and this is where the survey has really helped out, because we had like two thousand different survey responses, and going to the public gave us a lot of really good insight in terms of what people are looking for at the airport. The facility, obviously, because it's pretty much a brand-new airport, we're the newest in the country. The runway and airfield was actually very sufficient, and there were no major recommendations for the airfield. Compatible land use, this was something we heard early on as a concern, and we had a lot of really good conversations that came about from this in terms of ensuring that the land around the airport, which is built brand-new, was still compatible. We don't want to have a situation where you have residents moving in and around the airport, and now they're complaining. We don't want that. So during the process, actually, St. George enacted zoning on their aspect of it, and we created new, we had new discussions with Washington City, which allowed us to really look at kind of promoting, again, what is good land use? So things like industrial, commercial, those aspects of it. And they actually do the notification on the deeds for the residential that is near the airport. You can see the area to the north and to the south.
What do you mean by notification on the deeds? So people know when they're?
People know there's an airport nearby. That's a standard practice usually near the airport, areas around the airport.
I'm sure that'll keep them from complaining about the noise in the future.
Right. It's like, there's a pig farm nearby. They'll still complain.
Yeah. So the good thing, though, is actually, a lot of times, airports are more developed, and all the different safety zones that are around the airport, there's a lot of cases in the country where airports don't even own some of that land. In this case, the airport owns the entire thing. So this is, it's actually, you're in a really good position compared to a lot of other peers. But we want to avoid those situations, because a lot of times, you have perceived noise problems. And we ran the noise contours. They're never going to leave our port property in terms of what you can actually act upon. But people will see an airplane, and it's visually loud, and that's usually somewhat of a concern. But as far as meaningful noise problem, we don't anticipate that.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? If you require an EIS, then are archaeological surveys prior to any more?
We did a Phase One survey that kind of noticed if there were any major issues, the archaeological survey around the airport for development. But there were certain sites that were flagged, and if we do develop in there, we actually know where for their investigation. Desert West, I believe. We coordinated through the local engineer that works at the airport. We coordinated through them. Oh, we went back to the hangars and development. This is actually one of the growing areas. I mean, as we did the process, I think when we started it, we did a survey of the airport. It showed all the existing buildings. We actually just went back now that we're done, added all the hangars that were built over the course of the project. There's at least ten hangars that were added since we did the initial survey. That kind of tells you the kind of growth that we're seeing here at the airport. And then, but the main thing is the terminal. So the terminal, if you've been there in the morning when all the flights are leaving, it gets pretty busy in there. And we actually did an analysis in the facility, and if you built that terminal for the demand of that peak morning hour today, the terminal would double the size that it currently is. So now, if we're looking at going out into the future, so we're going to be building towards those different planning activity levels that you see there, so Level Two or Level Three, if we built to that level, so something like ten or fifteen years out, because you don't want to build it and then need to build again. So you want to identify at some point in the future that's going to make sense. And it would be probably close to double or triple the existing size facility just to meet the future needs. That's really one of the key areas we focused on was the terminal. Our development alternatives, this is our preferred development alternative. You can somewhat see in there the existing facility, but it would develop more of a concourse type layout. We have four gates, jet bridges, that looks like a traditional terminal with a concourse that you see at most other facilities. The key thing we heard was restaurant and food, so we know need to have some kind of more concessions besides the vending machines there at the airport. And then also the, a larger or a better arrivals facility for meters and greeters. There are times where you're at the airport, I'm coming off the plane. They're not applauding for me, but I thought they were. That's my mistake. But there are sometimes more people greeting the plane that are on the plane. So we don't want those people there in the middle, right by the TSA checkpoint and the queuing. We want them on the baggage claim area. So kind of reconfiguring the arrivals that has a really welcoming experience when folks come back home, because that's a key, a very important aspect of this airport. Again, airside, very straightforward, just kind of protecting for that compatible land use and future potential needs, but there's no major airside alternatives. This is our draft recommended plan, where everything green, this is like the twenty-year vision. So they're not going to go build this tomorrow, but it's really more as the demand comes in. Now, the phase and implementation of this, one of the really cool comments that we got over the course of the project, we had the planning activity levels and different triggers. But we had a steering committee that involved a Dixie MPO, and one of the things they said they needed to know is, when do we need to be ready for our infrastructure to meet your needs? So we actually went and forecasted the years for those planning activity levels to give them a better idea as to when they need the supporting roads that can help the airport. That was a really good feedback we got from the process. So this is here as the kind of the high, medium, low-case scenario for the different activity levels. And then the overall implementation, this is, for lack of a better term, is a grocery list for the airport over their longer-term needs. And you can see that there's a lot of, a lot of needs for a growing airport. But a lot of the demand-driven projects, what's difficult here in this case is the faster you grow, the faster you're going to need these projects, which means that there's more money needed sooner as opposed to a lower growth where you have that more balanced approach in terms of revenue and expenses. But the good news is, is that not a, we've determined, it's not a single dollar of local taxpayer money goes to fund the capital expenses nor the operations and maintenance of the airport. It's entirely self-sufficient, which is great. There are funding sources, so that you saw that over $200 million in needs, ninety percent of that will come from the FAA's AIP program, which is the Airport Improvement Program, that's funded by aviation users. So when you buy an airline ticket, you're paying in to the system that funds these projects. So if you're not using aviation, you're not paying for this at all. So that's a really important thing for a lot of the local folks to know, that if you're not using the airport, you're not paying for it. That's kind of one of the key messages we wanted to deliver here. In addition, there's a passenger facility charged to buy an airline ticket. Four dollars and fifty cents of that goes to the airport. They can use to fund projects. So in addition to the terminal, so the terminal is going to have a bigger ticket item. But kind of unique right now is the bipartisan infrastructure law that came out that creates a hundred-million-dollar pot per year for airports the size of St. George that allows them to compete for this funding. If you have a terminal with a growing area with a strong need, it should compete very well. We're hoping to be an additional funding source to fund that terminal program. So that's just a quick overview of the master plan. It's an eighteen-month study. So if you have any questions?
Commissioner?
Well, it's fun to see, because I was on the initial committee and then a council member when the airport was built. And in fact, went with Elliott and the group out of Denver on the tour of seeing airports around. And luckily, he said, what do you like? You know, well, we liked the one in Michigan, and it was an amazing airport, and we didn't like any of the others. So it was a kind of an interesting thing. But when he said, great, well, he laid out this plan, and there was dead silence as we were in Savannah, Georgia's airport, because it was the ugliest building I had ever seen. And nobody wanted to say anything. You had the mayors, you had council members, the manager, and we didn't want to hurt this person's feelings because this was his plan. And we said, do you have the old plans of the one up in northern Michigan? And he said, yeah, we could dust those off. I said, perfect. Change your, adopt that to us, change the outside, do some changes to it. It's the same size, et cetera, et cetera. And that's what you have. It has a sister airport in northern Michigan. Anyhow, the point of all that is, is that was kind of heartfelt for the area and matching the theme. But I just want to make sure that the plan that's going to come forward doesn't destroy the look of the airport. And you had a slide, and it was perhaps the fastest one you glanced over, so it's the most scary slide to me. You get that one, the green one.
Oh, this one here? Yeah.
Uh, yeah. So I can't really make total heads or tails of that, but it almost looks like the, is the old charm of what we have going away.
So the terminal, I mean, we haven't, this is just the general, a broader plan. This is really more two-dimensional. Kind of the next phase of this is to really take a closer look at that terminal to figure out some of the questions we want to ask. If you look at terminal plan for alternatives.
That looks okay to me.
We don't know if that concourse, for example, is going to be on a second level, or it's going to be ground level. That requires analysis. So even things like, if you have more senior citizens using your airport, an older demographic, you may not want things like escalators, because that can be a challenge. So these are questions we need to ask, where do you have to have it more improved vertical circulation? And if you do have a second level, so a second elevator, those are things that will get flushed out by the architect, and a good architect is going to capture that local aesthetic. So Savannah, Georgia, bend to that terminal, and it looks like a southern plantation.
Yes, it's beautiful.
Very well for Savannah, Georgia.
Yeah.
Does not work in Flint, Michigan.
No. Well, when I was eighteen years old, I went to Germany for two years and left a beautiful Swiss village where I grew up. Okay? When I got back, it was all torn down, and they built a new Swiss village that looked neither like a village nor Switzerland. And so I'm a little gun-shy here in my older years that that quaint, functional, beautiful canyon with the wood and the rock stays.
That's very important. You want your terminal to be reflective, especially for an inbound and a visitor market. People are coming here for the outdoors. So if there's, I always like to use the example of like Palm Springs Airport. You have like that beautiful outdoor aesthetic, because that's why you're going there.
Yeah.
So that's one thing that's important, and we've already had some discussions, like when the terminal comes about, of working with an architect that can really bring that local flair. And again, most good architects, we work all over the country, they know how to bring that that unique character that makes it special to the community, because that's important.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We do appreciate that airport. Very good. Our next item is a public hearing to allow public input regarding the Washington County Harmony Heights paving project assessment area and all related matters. And Devin, do we have Aaron Wade here from Gilmore and Bell? Was he going to present first, or are we going to go right into the?
Yeah, Aaron Wade is on Zoom, ready to go.
Okay.
Yeah. Hi, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So yeah, Aaron Wade with Gilmore and Bell, and filling in for Randy Larson and Darcy Stevens that you've been working with on this. They both had some conflicts today. But just, you know, as a bit of background, this is just a public hearing here today for anyone who wants to come and discuss the, you know, the intention resolution that you have adopted in the creation of this assessment area. So happy to, you know, answer any questions that folks have, but you know, I think you can just turn the time over for anyone that wanted to speak in the public hearing.
Okay, very good. Well, at this moment, we will all entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
I'm moved.
We have a motion, second, for, to open our public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion. We are now in public. Aye, the motion. We are now in public hearing, and so I'm assuming there are some people here that would like to comment for or against this, and if you wouldn't mind just coming to the microphone and stating your name. And, nobody here?
They're all in harmony.
They're all in harmony. Well, for those, oh, very good.
Hi, my name is Pete Codella. I have the privilege of living on Harmony Heights Road. We've lived there for about twelve years right now. It cost me one car so far. We had a culvert that was badly damaged, and I guess I was talking to my wife and hit the damage, and they went the right side of the front end. It is a dirt road. It has been a dirt road. At one point, it was a gravel road. That's not the case anymore. We actually have road bedrock coming through, particularly on the little hill that comes up from the creek. You can see the tops of all the boulders that were underneath at one point in time. We're desperate need of something. In the winter time, when we get the mud, I can't really get up that little hill to my house in four wheel drive. My car fishtails all over the place. So personally, and unfortunately, I just bought a new car. So personally, I'm really hoping that we can get enough community oomph this time to get that road paved and to move into the 21st century. And gentlemen, I appreciate very much your willingness to even consider this, not to mention my cars. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I believe that the county is, Ron, we are putting in some of the road base and engineering in to help this project.
Right.
Very good. Anyone else like to comment? Please.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for making this a SAD district. We've been waiting a long time to pave this road. I mean, it's terrible. Every time I leave my house, it's like driving an off-road experience. It's gotten so bad that the potholes, the rumble strips, the washboard, it just tears your vehicles up. My wife don't even want to drive her car anymore. She don't even want to take it out on the, on the road. I don't know if you've ever lived on a dirt road, but we have a dirt road, not a gravel road. The gravel's all been pushed into the borrow pit. There's none left. And, and when, in the summertime, we've got dust. In the wintertime, we've got ice. And sometimes the ice lasts two weeks until they come in and grade the road and take it away. I mean, it's just gotten so bad that I don't know what we can do, but we need the road paved. I'm hoping, and that's why I want to thank you guys for making it a SAD district assessment, so we can, we have to pay for it, oh well. We need to get it done.
Thank you very much.
And I also want to thank the ladies that gave us the information on the election. That was very interesting. I'm glad to see you guys.
Thank you very much. Excuse me, sir. What was, what was your name?
John Burstall.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm in.
Sorry, what was your name?
John Burstall.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak about this project? Well, at this point, I will entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Very good. We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. This process will now have a certain, Mr. Attorney, how many days, and then if the protest comes?
There's a protest period, so parties can protest if they choose. And then at that point, once that's over, the assessment area will be formed, once that's over, assuming that the threshold is not met.
Very good. Well, excellent. How many days is that?
Mr. Wade, do you know how many days that is?
I'll leave it sixty days.
Sixty days, okay. Well, very good. Well, thank you all.
Thank you remotely.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wade. We'll now go on to item seven, consideration of purchase requests. Ray Boyer? Usually, you're like fifteen minutes in, and now it's an hour and fifteen minutes, so.
Save the best for the middle, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay. The first one I have here for purchase requisitions is a new four ton replacement HVAC unit for the courthouse off a plaza, office plaza. This does not include labor or anything. This is just the unit, for $12,183.46. The next one, the next few are for the tourism department. This first one is for the volunteer incentive program account deposit. This is $15,000. Next one is promo items. This is specifically water bottles, and this is for $13,311.95. The next one is production of the, I'm just gonna say the, an Iron Man video, because I don't know how to say the word in Hawaii, Hawaiian. And this is for $11,450. The next one is for the exhibit hall microphone and sound system improvement project at the Dixie Center. This is for $13,700. Moving on to emergency services, this is for specialized furniture products for the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center in the new administration building. This is for $64,338.80. And we are doing this purchase requisition because the vendor required us to have a PO. Otherwise, it would be wrapped up in the new building costs. This next one, next couple are for the fair. This first one is for a ten by seventeen mobile video wall for the rodeo, concerts, and derby. This includes technicians and transport. This is for $14,016. The next one is for the HCP Habitat Conservation Plan. They received permission from the BLM to continue their tortoise fence previously, from what they were, they started doing in the desert reserve. And this additional amount is $20,420. The next viewer for IT. This first one is for access, access points for the new administration building. We bought half last year. This is the second half. This is for $10,742.55. Next one is for core network switches. This is for $84,426.80. Next one is kind of half IT, half library. This is for access points for all library branches. The Springdale branch is being funded by a grant, but the total for this The next one is for the library again. This is for public lab computers. Again, the grant is funding the Springdale's portion, the Springdale branch's portion of the, the computers. This is for $28,713.44. Next one is for Legacy Park. This is to haul and place dirt for the racetrack, large outdoor arena, and the indoor arena. This is for $93,575. This next one is for the Rose Department. This is equipment fuel. This is for $40,630.74. Onto the Sheriff's Office. This first one is for some new cabinets in some new offices they needed to make, and also training room cabinets. This is for $10,504. Next one is for inmate supplies, such as clothing, bedding, footwear, et cetera. This is for $18,625.19. And the final one is for some new ammo for the SWAT team. This is for twelve nine millimeter pistols. This is for $14,131.56. That also includes accessories such as sights and holsters. And that is all.
Very good. Any questions, Commissioners, or?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the purchase requests that have been submitted by Ray.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the purchase requests. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item eight, thank you, Ray. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next item is consideration of 2021 tax abatement summary. Susan Lewis, our esteemed clerk auditor.
I feel like I've been up here a lot today.
You have, you have.
Between the Board of Equalization and Commissioner. So you have in front of you the tax abatement history. And at the end of each year, we bring to you the information of what tax abatements came through, what applications came through, that went, that totally fit the criteria. So we don't bring them to you individually, because the people just automatically qualify because they're a disabled veteran, or they've got the, the blind abatement. Different amounts of their property taxes lowered because of information they've given us on an application, and these are the ones that qualified automatically. On your usual consent agendas, you'll see one or two that are kind of outside of the borders that we want you to look at individually, but this one's kind of a big mass for the whole year of 2021, came to $3.9 million of tax abatements in Washington County. The good news is that all the circuit breaker and the market circuit breaker is tax abated through the state of Utah's rules, I guess. And so we can request and have requested and have that be reimbursed to us.
Very good.
You know, just, there's a good number of public here that think of a circuit breaker as something in their garage. Would you explain what that means and who it applies to?
So they are people in our community who are elderly. They have a, an age requirement and an income requirement. They're down around the poverty level, and so they are unable to pay as high of property taxes. And so there is an abatement program, a, a circuit breaker program, that they can come and fill out an application and prove to us that they do qualify. And if they do, then some of their taxes abated. It's discounted.
It is an important program, and it's important the public know about it, because sometimes you hear like, hey, with everything going up, what about, you know, folks, especially, you know, elderly and others who are in their homes? And so there are programs to help. Now, the $3.9 million does come at a cost, because what will happen is that will need to be readjusted, and then, then spread out among the other taxpayers. And so it's not necessarily free, so to speak. But anyway, I think it's important people kind of understand that. But thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Commissioners, I will entertain a motion on the 2021 tax abatement summary.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the tax abatement summary as presented by clerk auditor Susan Lewis.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the 2021 tax abatement summary. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Our next item is consideration of resolution R-2022-2923, a resolution proclaim, proclaiming May 2nd through the 8th, 2022, as Iron Man World Championship Volunteer Week in Washington County. And did our tourism office just barely bail on us?
Brittany's here.
Oh, Brittany. How could I, yeah.
I'm here. Would you like me to read the proclamation?
Yes, I would like you to encourage everyone to volunteer for this.
It is, it is a lengthy proclamation, but I'll try to read quickly. A resolution proclaiming May twenty, May 2nd through the 8th as Iron Man World Championship Volunteer Week, whereas Washington County has been home to Iron Man events since 2010, and is preparing to host the Iron Man World Championship, May 7th, 2022. And whereas, Iron Man events have brought more than 120 million in positive economic impact to local businesses and communities in Washington County. And whereas, this is the first time the Iron Man World Championship will be held outside of Hawaii. And whereas, the wire, the Iron Man World Championship will be the largest, most globally recognized event to ever be held within Washington County, bringing thousands of world-class athletes from all fifty states and over a hundred countries. And whereas, these champion athletes embrace the positive characteristics and qualities of our community heritage, as they overcome challenges to compete in the land of endurance. And whereas, the world championship event is projected to bring an influx of nearly $30 million in revenue from visitors to this great community. And whereas, for more than a decade, community members throughout the country, or throughout the county, have invested their time, skills, and energy to host these successful Iron Man events. And whereas, community leaders in the cities of Hurricane, Washington, St. George, Santa Clara, Ivans, and other neighboring communities enthusiastically support and facilitate the event operations each year at a level deemed worthy to now host the world championship. And whereas, the dynamic organizations at Sand Hollow and Snow Canyon State Parks, along with well-trained professionals in public safety, emergency response, medical, search and rescue, transportation, and communications, work together to ensure successful event operations. And whereas, an unprecedented number of volunteers will be devoting their time and talents, along with the best effort of the above-mentioned communities, agencies, and organizations to coordinate the world championship events. Therefore, be it resolved that the County Commission of Washington County, Utah, do hereby proclaim May 2nd through the 8th, 2022, as Iron Man World Championship Volunteer Week, a time when we can truly showcase the enduring qualities of our people and our land by embracing the event and welcoming it to the world. We encourage residents, businesses, and organizations to enthusiastically support the world championship event, to provide and incentivize service opportunities for employees and team members, to recognize the positive impact of service in our county, to thank those who serve, to celebrate the achievements of the world-class athletes, to find ways to embrace the opportunities the event brings, and to rise to it.
Thank you. Super. That was a, that was fantastic.
Well read.
Well read.
Next time, I'll memorize it.
You know, I will, yeah, we'll be expecting that. I will say that participating in our last world championship, 70.3, was a, was a lot of fun interacting with volunteers, and then after, we had some great dinners and celebrations with them. But I think that's really what makes Washington County so spectacular.
Yeah.
And last year, there was about 3,000 plus volunteers, and this community is just fantastic. And I will say, because this does inconvenience almost everyone, so come out and enjoy the festivities, but also recognize, we were just talking about those pesty property tax. And we believe, studies have shown that visitors bring revenue into this county in a way that lowers every household by about thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars a year in taxes. So, so it is, it is beneficial to all of us.
We can quantify the annoyance, then?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so when it gets up to too much annoyance, we'll just have to.
You're sitting there waiting at the, at the light, the traffic.
Yes.
Just thinking, am I $1,400 annoyed right now?
Yeah, that's exactly what we're asking our citizens to do.
And if not, then just enjoy that $1,400 tax break.
You know, it is an honor, though, to be able to, to host such a prestigious event. So with that, Mr. Chairman, or Commissioners, I will, your chairman will accept a motion.
Okay, good cover, good recovery there. Mr. Chair, I move that on item nine, that we approve resolution number R-2022-2923, proclaiming May 2nd through 8th, 2022, as Iron Man World Championship Volunteer Week in Washington County.
Second, that motion.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item 10 is consideration of resolution R-2022-2934, a resolution approving an inter-local cooperation agreement between Washington County, Utah County, and the State of Utah Department of Natural Resources. This is Division of State Parks, DSP, in which DSP will, DSP agrees to provide support to county, to county in hosting the Iron Man 70.3 World Championship, St. George, on May 2022, and Iron Man 70.3 World Championship, October 2022, and fulfilling the county's contract with the World Triathlon Corporation, WTC. And I think that first one is not 70.3, it's a full Iron Man, right?
Full Iron Man, a full distance, yep. So this is just the fulfillment of the inter-local agreement between the county and the state parks to fulfill their requirements as per the contract. They've been reviewed and approved by the state parks, and so they're here for your approval now.
Move to approve, and I won't read it.
Yes, please.
I don't know, maybe we should have Brittany read all eight pages.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
No, no, I'll second the motion, though.
We have a motion to second to adopt resolution R-2022-2974. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you for staying there, Brittany. Our next item is consideration of resolution R-2022-2935, a resolution approving the inter-local cooperation agreement between Washington County, Utah County, and Santa Clara. cooperation agreement between Washington County, Utah, uh, County and Santa Clara, uh, city, Utah, city in which city agrees to provide support to county and hosting the Iron Man World Championship, St. George, May 2022, the Iron Man 70.3 World Championship, St. George, October 2022, and Iron Man 70.3 North American Championship, 2023, 2025, and the Iron Man North American Championship, May 2024.
So, like you said, these events do, um, touch every city in the county and so this is the interlocal agreement that we have with Santa Clara, just, um, stating what they are providing as far as services go for the Iron Man events moving forward.
And I'm starting to wonder if our esteemed legal counsel is being paid by the word on these, on these titles.
I think what they're doing is just, they just make the whole thing really clear in the titles, right? So they need no further information.
Why read the whole document when it's laid out in the title?
You should just sign the, the agenda.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve resolution R-2022-2935, proving the interlocal cooperation agreement between Washington County and Santa Clara as.
Very good.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item 12 is consideration of R-20, consideration of resolution R-2022-2936. And I'm just gonna say this is another Iron Man agreement, um, with.
Similar to the others.
With, with, uh, which city?
Uh, St. George.
With St. George.
Yes.
And just remember everything I read a few minutes ago and, uh, there we are.
Perfect.
Second.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
And I'm still here.
Very good. Our next item 13 is consideration of resolution R-2022-2937, a resolution approving Tourism Tax Advisory Board Recommendations for Nonprofit Marketing Sponsorship and Event Funding.
So, as you know, we just, um, finished out our kind of fe, our February funding cycle. Uh, these are all nonprofit events and marketing requests that were, um, uh, recommended to the commission by the Tourism Advisory Board in our meeting, in our last meeting in March. So there are three event sponsorships that they are recommending. The Kanta Arts Foundation for the Festivals of, Festival of the Americas, which will be held in May at $15,000. The Red Rock Dance Festival, uh, sponsored by St. George Dance Company for $2375, $2,375. The Arts Council of Washington County for the Creative Age Conference for $6,000. The next three are marketing sponsorships, so these are dollars that we will provide to the, um, entities to help further their reach and to attract different or new audiences to the area. So, um, Arts to Zion, we will be providing marketing support for, support for printing their brochure and distribute, um, distribution via Certified Rack for $16,000. The Silver Reef Museum, printing their brochure and distributing it as well for $5,500. And then ToaCon Center for the Arts, they are expanding their marketing reach, um, and they are requesting $75,000 and that was the re, the recommendation from the Tourism Advisory Board.
Just, just to clarify, for anybody who's new to this a little bit, these are, these are not property tax dollars, these are dollars that, from heads in beds and.
These are transient room tax dollars, yes.
And can only under state law be spent on developing or marketing tourism and, and those related activities. This is not taking property tax and spending it on ToaCon or something else.
And these, um, applicants go through a very lengthy application process. Um, they go through quite a review process as well before they go to the Tourism Advisory Board and the Tourism Advisory Board discusses those and makes the recommendations to the commission. And several of my events were here, but when they looked at the agenda, they did not stay, but they all wanted me to express to you how much they appreciate the funding assistance.
Thank you very much.
Well, Commissioner Snow must have read my mind because last week, a group of people were talking to me and saying, why are you spending my property tax dollars to bring more people here? And I said, uh, explain? And they said, yeah, there's dollars going all over the place, the world, to market us. And I said, that's not your money. So thank you for clarifying that.
Well, I do.
Having said that, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number R-2022-2937.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Um, our next item is, uh, consideration of resolution R-2022-2938, a resolution approving the council of government recommendations. And the council of government is, um, uh, an organization made up of the mayors and the county commission and it is involved in, in approving funding that is being set aside to purchase right-ofways for future roads. And so the cities will then apply to the COG, as we call it, and, um, request funding. Um, and so there was in the COG, and then that, those are recommendations back to us. And so Commissioners, you have before us, um, a list of, of items that were approved in the COG meeting. Um, let's see, three of them are going to St. George and one is going to Ivans. There's four altogether. And, uh, Susan Lewis is the treasurer of the COG and, and, uh, let the COG council of governments know that, uh, the funding was available.
Uh, and I think it's worth noting, actually, one of them in a, possibly a first in the history of mankind, a government did not spend all the money that it was granted and is returning a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah, and then they immediately asked for it back so they could spend it again.
Well, yes, but still.
So that's typical government for you, so.
I, I was gonna move on to number two, but at least the, the first moment in a glimmer of hope, they did not spend all the money.
I'm not gonna let you have that moment.
I wanted it so badly.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve, approve resolution R-2022-2938, approving the council of government recommendations through the COG.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item 15 is commission report.
You know, I, I said enough earlier on the, uh, elections, so I don't want to belabor that point, but I do want to congratulate everybody who's still sitting here.
Yes, yes.
After over an hour and a half, this is not the usual crowd. I feel like we should get drinks and pizza.
Usually, it's just poor old Maury over here just waiting for the last, the last little bit, write a few questions.
Susan needs them seen signed, but we've got a crowd now still.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I appreciate those that are engaged in the civil process and, and still sitting here patiently, so.
Now, we do, uh, we are broadcast on the community, uh, television station and we are also, I thought we're, we're Facebook Live as well, so, so in the, we don't try to do things, we are trying to be very transparent and we are excited to have you guys all here. And, um, we've been here for a while, so with an audience, I feel like we should just keep talking, but I don't have too much more to report.
That's adjourned.
Oh, other than the county fair, which we are.
Oh, yeah. Get adjourned and have them tell stories.
Very good.
Campfire.
Anything else? With that, uh, we will stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.